Would the board clerk take the role, please?
District one, everyone.
Here.
District two, Chuck and Shaw.
Here.
District three, Karen Brill.
Here.
District four, Erica Whitfield.
Yeah.
District five, Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District six, Marshall Andrews.
Here.
District Governor Emma Robinson.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present along with our superintendent, our general consul, our inspector general, and our board clerk. Board members, we have no minutes to approve. First item on the agenda is added item for good cause. DOL A1 is being added for good cause. Good cause exists for adding this item to the agenda now with the start of the school year, there will be visitors to district properties. Due to the coronavirus 2019 pandemic and the return to our school centers, board action is needed at this time to implement safety protocols for visitors entering the district property in accordance with CDC guideline and government governmental orders. This emergency policy will be in effect for a period of 90 days and a permanent policy will be brought to the board for adoption for school year 2021 within 90 days. We have two items been pulled from the agenda already. We have, Mr. Superintendent, do you have any items to withdraw? Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to withdraw at this time.
I have nothing to withdraw at this time.
So we have two items pulled from the consent agenda, CS3 and POLGC1. Any board members want to pull anything else? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by, I've got Mrs. Whitfield up here twice. I was going to say, motion made by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield because you're two different places, but I guess Ms. Brill, Ms. Brill is going to second that motion. Any discussion on favor, opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That is kind of weird, Mrs. Whitfield, you're up here twice for us, but it's weird. So we have eight board members present today. Disclosures and absences, anybody? Mrs. Whitfield one, Mrs. Whitfield two, nothing. Superintendent, do you have comments?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. We are announced as five short days before the final day of 2021 school year. On August the 31st, we look forward to welcoming students back to class through what our chief academic officer refers to, first to as distance learning 2.0. The school day will be structured as it is in brick and mortar instructions. Students will follow a bell schedule. Teachers will instruct live lessons through their Google classrooms every day and student attendance will be taken. On Monday, the district emailed parents a great deal of back to school information. The email contained a magazine-like digital manual called the COVID-19 guiding document. I need to ask all those watching our meeting today, if you know people out there with children that may not have internet access or may not be aware of what's going on, please tell them to contact their schools to get the most up to date information and we can get them copies of anything that we've sent out electronically. The guidebook will answer a wide variety of your questions and concerns. Parents, if you haven't reviewed that document yet, I encourage you to do so. While we are opening in distance learning on August the 31st for all students and your children are doing their Google classrooms on that date, we are also actively planning for the future. Next week, you will receive a call from the district giving you another opportunity to decide if, when we do reopen physical campuses on a yet to be determined date, you would like to have your child remain in distance learning or will you send your child back to brick and mortar in person instruction. We have asked you this before, but we realize that this is an evolving pandemic and your preference may have changed. We want to be sure we know where you stand and accommodate you as best we can. So please, please as that when that questionnaire goes out, please take an opportunity to complete it. It is going to be very short and in a lot of cases, we're going to send it to your cell phone so you can just click a button and it'll respond to us immediately. The district will reopen campuses approximately one week after the county enters into phase two. Those of you wishing to continue the distance learning may certainly do so, while those of you wishing to have your children return to campus for in-person instruction will also have that option. Parents, it's important that you accept that call next week. Again, I have to say that and indicate your choice in order for our schools and your principals to plan accordingly for your child. In the meantime, please know that the district has been working hard all summer preparing for the new school year. To our educators, thank you in advance for all that you do, all that you will do and everything you've done in the past. This is very uncertain times, but I just want to thank you. The board and I recognize that you never envisioned this scenario when you signed up to be a teacher. In addition to your professional commitment, I realize that many of you have also encountered fear and tremendous loss in your own families. The school board and many employees across the district have also experienced this, so we're all in it together. We're all, we all empathize. Teachers and to all of the team Palm Beach, your dedication and commitment to our children is an ongoing source of inspiration for all of us. On August the 31st, I look forward to visiting Google classrooms throughout the district to see our teachers with their students and to see the smiling faces of children who we have all missed so very much. To all of our educators, students, parents, guardians, welcome back to a new school year. Our theme is going the distance together. And let me reiterate that together is the most important word of that entire statement. With everything going on in our world, in our life, we're not going to get through this unless we are together. And so I appreciate the team coming up with that theme. And so we will exactly do that. We will work through this together. I encourage everyone to be patient with us. We are doing everything that we can, but also continue to give us the information so that we can improve because you may see some things that we don't. So again, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you and this board for all their support and let's welcome everyone back to a wonderful new school year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. McQuinn, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. And remember, I don't always, I have to refer to something on my phone when I do it, but before I get to that piece, Dr. Pinois said it, and I know that our schools feel it right now, but I want to remind us, Monday won't look like we all wanted it to look like. That'll come soon, but let's not forget that we disagree, we meaning everyone, about when we open, how we open, but let's just instill in the students that incredible enthusiasm for the first day of school, a kindergartner for the first time and the ninth grader for the first time being a high school student. So let's remember that really exciting time and, and even though we adults and a lot of the kids aren't happy with how it looks right now, let's try to remember to, to show them that enthusiasm because it's very cool to start a new school year. Now, the other has to do with curriculum. Not, don't worry, Mr. Oswald, but I met last week, I think, I think last week, I know virtually, with the president and program manager for junior achievement at the Palm Beaches and Treasure Coast, President Claudia Bartow, and our, I'm calling her program planner, I think she's more authoritative than that, relatively new to junior achievement, Katie Spitz, I hope I say her name right also. I will throw in there that she is a graduate from Palm Beach Gardens High School Entrepreneurship Academy, just throwing in that little plug. And she's now working full-time with junior achievement. And this is so perfect for our teachers who are starting their virtual programs. What, first of all, junior achievement programs are Google certified programs. That's important. Also, Katie herself will work with teachers or members of the staff. They'll work one-on-one with teachers on how to incorporate these programs into their curriculum. And I forgive me for reading this, but I would never memorize it. So I just want to remind you about junior achievement and how closely they partner with what could down the line be a North Technical High School, just throwing that in there again, no pressure at all. But their mission is to connect volunteers to the classroom, teaching students the skills needed to succeed in the global economy and financial literacy, work readiness and entrepreneurship to empower young people to own their economic success. That's what we want to do. So my plug for junior achievement, I will send the brochure to Mrs. Claudia Shea and she can post that so that teachers can access it. It's really cool. Oh, by the way, every single program lesson coordinated to the standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McQuinn. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. My comment is, is kind of unusual because I'm going to reflect on not being here last week. I know some of the board members know that I was out of town, but my message is to, really to all of those watching, because there is hope at the end of the tunnel. Where we were last week was in a college town and on Friday morning, I heard a news report of their daily incidents reports of positive virus infections. And it absolutely amazed me because in all of the counties surrounding this one, the county that, that I happened to be in, they had five cases. In all of the surrounding counties in that area, the numbers were from one to eight. And the largest city in the area had a total of 85 cases. So I think it's important that we keep the perspective that we can beat this and that if we do follow the rules and everybody setting up, that we have the opportunity to see things that end of the tunnel, tunnel could possibly come. And it was, it amazed me to hear that comment on the news that day, but it also gave me that little bit of ray of hope that maybe we can get through this as, as well as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So Mrs. McQuinn's comments regarding the new school year mirror mine, albeit more eloquently than I would have put the words, so I won't repeat them, but instead I'm going to take us in an entirely different direction. Today is Women's Equality Day. It is the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution giving women the right to vote. It's a day for heartfelt thanks to those women and men who worked hard for us to achieve this milestone in history. We have come a long way, but we still have a lot more work to do. There are still many who remain disenfranchised and we need to continue our efforts to achieve full gender equality. But on this historic day, let's celebrate the trailblazers and thank all of the women who continue to break down barriers and shatter the glass ceiling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to, to mention today, I actually got to go to a, an in-person back to school event, which was amazing and so much fun. At Highland Elementary this morning, they gave out backpacks from Office Depot. And I just want to say a huge thank you to all the teachers that came this morning to these events. There was a pile of events in the Glades as well and they, people showed up and passed out backpacks to the families. The families were lined up around the corner when I left, which was amazing, just to see how many people were there and, and how many people were excited about coming back to school. And a huge thank you to Office Depot for donating the backpacks through the Education Foundation, who we're so grateful for, just to be able to be there and, and see, you know, kids getting excited about school. It just, it meant so much to me and I got to leave the house, which is also super exciting. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody involved in those events and thanks for having me and I cannot wait for school to start next week. I'm super excited. So good luck to everybody and thanks for all your efforts.
Thanks, Mrs. Whitfield. Mrs. Andrews? Mrs. Andrews? No, I can't hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Well, first of all, first of all, I'd like to say, I'm so excited that the teachers came back this week and I'm happy for them as well as letting them know I welcome them and I appreciate all of the hard work that they have been doing to get our students ready. Can you hear?
Mrs. Andrews? For some reason, we're getting major feedback and you're on the screen two times. So I don't know what you and Mrs. Whitfield have gone on here, but you, we got two of you, which is nice, but I think maybe that caused enough.
When it was me, Mr. Barbieri, I had two screens open with, with my face in both of them, so she'll have to close one.
Yeah, Mrs. Whitfield, if you, if you've signed on to us twice, can you sign off one of those? I mean, Mrs. Andrews, I'm sorry.
I should be in one screen. Yay. Well, first of all, I want to welcome the teachers back, thank them for all their hard work and they're so excited to be able to take care of the children on the first day of school on Monday, distance learning. It's going to be great because the children have been so excited about getting back to school. I want to thank the Education Foundation for the backpack giveaway in the Glades today and Erica, you're in Lakewood, but they've been all over the county today making kids happy. And so it's exciting because kids are excited. I know that many parents are a bit nervous, but you need to know, as you see us at the school board and you see all of the staff on every side, the academics as well as the operational side, we're trying to make sure that everything works well for your children. And so I really want you to know that we're listening when you email us. We hear your concerns, but we do feel that there's going to be a light at the end of the tunnel. I do believe that parents should have a choice and I think that's coming real soon. I think as we look through getting back to brick and mortar, teachers should be able to have choices and everybody needs to be taken care of as we work through this pandemic. So I'm excited that I can hear the bells ringing and the teachers have started and people have been working since March to get our schools ready. I want to thank them to let them know that I really appreciate all of their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Well, you guys have got me excited. I didn't have any comments planned, but now that you focused me, that yes, school really is going to start, albeit in distance learning and hopefully it will go better than, than our technological issues today, right? But, and Mrs. Brill reminded me of the 100th anniversary, right, of the woman's right to vote. I would hope that we will take a lesson from the past. Way back in the olden days in Palm Beach County schools, we had these things called focus lessons and they were little scripted lessons that the teacher could insert when there was a little downtime and they would, we used that to embed information in the students, in their students' minds actually, that was not contained in the regular textbooks. I would hope that we would use an initiative such as that to teach young people about the right to vote, the, the fact that women got the right to vote 100 years ago, just 100 years ago, and the fact that black women did not get the right to vote until the 1960s. It's very interesting to me that the demographic group that turns out in the largest percentage is black women, right? And so I think if we can embed in our young people, especially our high school students who will soon be able to vote, the, the sacrifices, the fights, the struggles that, that women and others had to go through in order to vote and, and why voting is so important. I mean, we have numerous examples, right, which I won't list right now, but if we can just embed that in little lessons in the curriculum so that, that they can embrace how, what a sacred right this is to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. On Monday, Superintendent and I, at the request of Mayor, County Mayor Kerner, met with, with him and County Administrator Baker, the Assistant County Administrator and, and Dr. Alonso.
We don't hear you, Mr. Barbieri.
Mr. Barbieri? Okay, thank you. That's probably good sometimes. So what I was saying, what I was saying that you, that you couldn't hear was on Monday, at the request of Mayor Kerner, the superintendent and I met with him, County Administrator Baker, the Assistant County Attorney, County Administrator and, and Dr. Alonso. The mayor was interested in hearing more about our reopening plans and, and our plans during the school year with respect to what we were doing to, to minimize risk to our students and staff. It was apparent in that meeting that the county is, is willing to, to stand by our side and be partners with us and help us in any way they can. The, as, as all of you probably know, the superintendent and, and Mrs. Baker meet regularly. They meet weekly, so there's a great partnership already between the, the school district and the county. The, to put, to put a little bad news on, on all the happiness about the school year starting, this morning I was in a test here at the, at the board, boardroom. What you just heard with Mrs. Andrews, that echoing, that's what we would hear if any of us want to stay home for the, for the board meetings. So at, at some point, we're going to have to make a decision for those board members that do not want to come in to the, to the boardroom. You're, the only way you're going to be able to connect is by telephone and you cannot be on the screen. There's no way to connect you visually to the board meeting. So give it, give it some thought because at some point when we decide to come back, those of you that don't want to come, the only way you're going to be able to participate in the meeting is by phone, the way we have done it in the past when somebody was ill or out of the country or whatever. So unfortunately, IT's tried everything and just, there's no way that it can be done because of the feedback that we would get. And that's the end of the comments. Let me get back to the other screen. So typically we have, we'd have speakers at this point, but we have no speakers today. So unless somebody's changed their mind about the consent, pulling on us for consent, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by, by Dr. Robinson. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So, so Mr. Superintendent, that takes us to new business and the first item on, under new business is CS3?
Yes, sir. CS3 unilateral transition plan for South Tech Charter Academy, Inc.'s Adult and Community Education Programs. I recommend the board approve the unilateral transition plan for South Tech Charter Academy, Inc.'s Adult and Community Education Programs back to the school district effective July 1, 2020 and authorize the superintendent and/or his designated to sign all related contracts and documents.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Shaw, seconded by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? Dr. Robinson, then Ms. Brill?
Actually, I think Ms. Brill got to pull it before I did, so I'll defer to her.
Okay, Ms. Brill?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Robinson. So I pulled it because of something in the plan itself. When I pulled the item, I was initially concerned about mixing adult ed with students at South Tech during the daytime, although that is not in the immediate plan. This is going to be on the old Odyssey campus. When I spoke with Mr. Bogus about my concerns, he mentioned the potential of creating a pro, a program akin to Atlantic Tech in Broward. There is a difference in the physical size of South Tech's new campus and Atlantic Tech. However, this potentially can be a wonderful partnership between the district and the conversion charter school. One of the board members of South Tech, Jim Nodder, is the former superintendent of Broward County Schools who opened Atlantic Tech. So if anyone knows how we can make that relationship work, it is Mr. Nodder. So I just want to let you know that I will vote in support of this item with the caveat that should we go down the road of commendling the students on the campus, my, my desire will be that staff will work collaboratively with South Tech. And additionally, I am sure that Mr. Nodder would allow you to avail yourselves of his expertise. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. I think that we're on the same wavelength here, except maybe I'm seeing the cup half empty. So as I understand this, well, first, let me say, I share the vision and have been pushing this here to essentially create our own versions of Atlantic Tech. And I know that Mrs. Brill's son went to Atlantic Tech, right? Do I recall that correctly? And my daughter-in-law went to Atlantic Tech and, and I went to graduate, we see her graduate from the nursing program, right? So, so we have some connection there, know how great those possibilities are. And I, I really thought that we were going to take a step forward on this old Odyssey new South Tech campus. Now, as I understand, we invested $16 million of the public dollars to, to rehab, fix, upgrade, whatever the right words are, the old Odyssey campus for South Tech. Now, South Tech has a great program. I'm not taking anything away from them, but it really, really disturbed me that it appears that we came to an impasse that I don't feel any need to get into the details about right now, but it, it, that impasse prevents us from accessing the rest of this facility at night and it prevents us from taking that next step, which in my mind would be to have an evening program that our young adults could and older adults could access for career technical education. And so I'm just really, really disappointed that whatever those roadblocks were have not been resolved. And so, I mean, actually, at this moment, I, I don't even know if I'm going to vote for or against this, but what I do know is I want to send a message that my expectation is that we circle back, make friends, whatever it is we need to do. I mean, I know when there's a disagreement, it's usually something on both sides. So I'm just asking that whatever our issues are, that we work with South Tech and, and start in a collaborative fashion, we're all trying to get, you know, young people educated, right? And to see if we can work this out because I'm with Ms. Brill. I want at the end of the day for us to get to the kind of configuration similar to Atlantic Tech where people have access day and night and there's different methods of entering, being accepted to the program. I mean, that's, that's what we need to do. We lost that 20 years ago because of decisions of a previous board, but now it's time, it's time to repair it. And so I'm just hoping that we'll circle back and figure out if it's, if it's Jay Bogus and, and Dr. Nodder, whoever the people are, to start mending that divide so we can get this done for our young people. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mrs. Andrews.
And I concur because I would like to see the West Tech campus be another Atlantic Tech. We took a field trip there this past year and everybody raved and raved and we gave up our programs 20 years ago. We're still struggling trying to get back, so we need to do exactly what Dr. Robinson has said. We need to get it done. There's no reason for Broward to have such a wonderful program and we're still struggling here in Palm Beach County.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you. And I'm just going to add, and I appreciate the comments of both of my colleagues, the one weakness that I found with Atlantic Tech was the way they supported their students with disabilities and we know that South Tech knows how to do that. So this really could be potentially a wonderful collaboration. And, and the same thing with West Tech. I know that, you know, we know how to do it, so I do hope these are our first steps. And as Dr. Robinson said, hopefully we can just throw away whatever bad relations there were when we were trying to negotiate this and come back and, and figure out a way to make this work into programs that we can be very proud of.
Vice Chairman Shaw?
Thank you. And I agree. And I think that the, the good thing is that with Mr. Bogus and Mr. Barch, we have some people who have vision that I think can make this happen and the opportunity is there. I think this one is more of a financial issue and the use of a facility. If you go back when we, when the, when South Tech was originally converted into a charter school, one of the issues that frustrated me at the time, and I believe I'm accurate in this and I hope that if I'm, if I'm not, that I'm corrected, but I believe there was a very large amount of money that was left in the adult education program at South Tech that actually over the last several years has been used to keep the school operating because of severe financial issues. So I'm hoping that as we go through with this new, the new campus and the work that Mr. Bogus and Mr. Barch can, can provide and the leadership from the school, that we can see transformation into some really good programs. And the vision that they had for dealing with the ESE students was one that had a lot of potential, so I'm hoping it does continue from there.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Post. Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Superintendent, POL A1.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, POL A1. I recommend the board adopt proposed emergency policy 2.065, visitation protocols on district property due to COVID-19. This action is necessary due to the imminent danger to the public health, safety, and welfare posed by transmission of COVID-19 and in order to facilitate the continuous operations of the district. The board is taking only the action necessary to protect the public interest. This immediate danger requires emergency action, and the procedure for the adoption of this emergency policy is fair under the circumstances for the reasons stated below.
Motion by Ms. Brill, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Discussion? Superintendent, do you want your staff to go over those changes? Would the board like the changes, staff to go over the change that was made?
I mean, I know they were small, but I think we should, based on, I think we should do a consistent practice moving forward. So yes, I would like the deputy superintendent to.
Thank you, Dr. Frinney. And lines 59 and 60, we added after answer mandatory screen questions as published on the district website at www.palmbeachschools.org/reopeningschools. That was the only change that was made.
All right. Is there any discussion by the board? All in favor? Post. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Superintendent, POL?
Yes, sir. POL G1. I recommend the board approve development of proposed revised policy 1.03, school board Mr. Oswald, could you unshare your screen, please? Mr. Barber, we can't hear you, sir.
I can't hear you, sir.
Okay. Dr. Robinson made a motion. I'm waiting for a second. By Mrs. Whitfield. Mrs. Rico, did you have something you want to add?
I didn't know if you wanted Mr. Harris to identify the changes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is the motion to amend that I would propose based on the comments at the workshop. First, in the agenda for regular meetings, add a general counsel report. Secondly, on approximately lines 48 to 50, to delete the good cause portion of the sentence relating to board discussion items to be tweaked in the future. And thirdly, to add with the safety protocols what Chief Kitzlero talked about, to include standardized screening questions. That's the proposed amendment that I would suggest.
Board members, Dr. Robinson, go ahead.
Yes, I'd make the motion for the items that Mr. Harris mentioned.
Seconded by Ms. McQuinn. Any discussion? All in favor? Post. Motion carries 7-0. Take us back to the main motion to approve the, to approve the policy. Any discussion? All in favor? Post. Motion carries 7-0. Superintendent, that takes us to the end of the agenda other than board discussion items. So at this point, we'll move to BD1, board discussion. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So this discussion item actually came out of, as a result of phone calls from parents and actually a teacher as well, where they discussed various books that had content that they considered to be offensive. Some of it was sexual, some of it was racial epithet, if that's the right word. And so, but these were books that's already on the approved book list. So I'm not really interested in censorship. What I had proposed to Mrs. Fetterman was that possibly, we, these books that people consider to have some offensive or questionable content might actually be, have an asterisk on the approved book list, and the request that the teacher is cognizant, that there's some content that some might view to be sensitive, and that maybe for some of these books, there's actually some professional development offered to, to help guide the teacher around those sensitive topics. The other component that I would envision is that this asterisk would mean that they would, these books would not be assigned for like summer or reading, or winter break reading, where they would read these things and leave to their own devices on how to interpret. So one of the books, for example, had descriptions of domestic violence. Well, that's a real life scenario. I'm not trying to hide children from real life, but I think that there needs to be a caring, knowledgeable, sensitive adult to help guide through those conversations. And so for that reason, I wouldn't want such books assigned, you know, for winter break or summer reading. And so Mrs. Fetterman made me aware that there's a provision in our contract with CTA that would make that difficult. At this moment, I don't remember the details, but I wanted to put this out here for a board discussion, because if, if the board thinks that this is a reasonable approach to balance people's sensitivities with the fact that we, I don't want to censor people. And I also think that we need to, we help children by talking about real life situations in a caring and compassionate way. If you agree, then that would be something that would end up on the bargaining table, as I understand.
Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Robinson, for bringing this up. I obviously haven't put a ton of thought about this, just because, you know, we're just hearing about this now. But at first blush, I feel like a list of sensitive topics does feel like censorship on some level, because it would change how those books are used. Also, I think it would be concerning to me who would be the one that would decide what a sensitive topic book is. I know we've had some of these discussions in the past about LGBT books and people wanting to not have children read if anybody in the book was not, you know, like, considered a straight person or something like that. So I do worry about how a sensitive book list could be interpreted. And so I think we would need some more discussion on it, but my first reaction is that it makes me a little nervous.
Vice Chairman Shaw, then Dr. Robinson?
Thank you very much. I think that this may open up an opportunity that probably is a little bit overdue. We have a very specific policy related to the review of instructional materials, including textbooks. But if I'm not mistaken, and Ms. Rico can certainly check on this, that policy may not have been changed for a long, long time, and things, it may be time to take a look at that. But I agree with Mrs. Whitfield. I think that Dr. Robinson's point is really valid, but I think that instead of us making any decision today on that, I think that the direction I would prefer is that this go back to staff and ask them to review the policy, but also take a look at the books that Dr. Robinson has heard from teachers, because teachers can use the district policy to review those books the same as the public can. So I think there may be mechanisms in place that would take care of this, but I think it is a valid issue, and it's probably timely right now that we do take a look at that. Thanks.
Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. So actually, I think you guys are proving my point, though, because I'm not trying, as I recall the policy, and thank you for recalling that policy, Mr. Shaw, as I recall it, it's either basically you're in or you're out, like the book is either on the list or you can't use the book at all. What I'm suggesting that there's some, there's the intermediary place, right, or assignment. I'm not suggesting that we take action today. I'm, I would just like, if people would say that's something that needs to be considered and that staff can work to consider in the way that they think is best and bring it back to us. But the point about LGBTQ is exactly on point, exactly on point. So suppose we have a book that has, you know, it's a stellar book, it's all award-winning, and it has some, the main character is gay, okay? Then, and Johnny has given us the book to read over the summer, and Johnny's family is not so welcoming, okay? What happens to that conflict in Johnny? And then what happens if, also if Johnny has a teacher who themselves might not be so open-minded, right? And that's why the part about professional development was inserted in this, in this bright idea, right? So I'm not trying to create a policy or plan or procedure today. What I'm saying is I think that there is an intermediary ground where we can have teachers guide students through books that are already on approved lists, right, to help open their minds and really to help them think about these real-life issues and circumstances, right, in a nonjudgmental way, right? I mean, I could tell you, the fellow that called me about the book that we, that had the descriptions of domestic violence was all upset because it made men look bad. Well, you know, so part of my response was when, you know, there's no more domestic violence than, like, it'll be fiction, right? But in the meantime, how about let's guide young people through that? Because it's real. They might be living in households with domestic violence. They might know somebody down the street that was murdered by a family member or something. I mean, these are real-life things, and so we can't put our heads in the sand, but we also cannot, in my opinion, allow teachers just to do the best they can. We have to support them as they walk through what might be a very sensitive topic for them. The teacher that called me about this one particular book that I won't describe, but it has some sexual content, was, I mean, seriously, was not a big deal for me. It was not something that would have offended me at all if my child read that book at the grade level that it was listed for, but it was offensive to her, right? And she thought it was age inappropriate, so on and so forth. And so it's just a place for, even if we all say grade and staff outlines plays, there's still some, there has to be some cushion inside there for thought amongst educators about the books. I'm not trying to decide what book goes on what list. There has to be a process. I'm just saying this is room for improvement, and so I wanted to put it out there.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, could you tell me what that policy is again? I need to make sure I capture that so we can go look at that.
I'm going to have to look it up, but Rico can't, but it's a review of instructional materials policy.
We'll be, we'll be writing a memo as we speak.
Oh, okay.
And I think.
All right. Well, Glenn, if you got it, I'm good. You and Keith got it, I'm good.
Yes, I have it, and we will take a review of the policy, and we will follow the directions we have. And the last revision of this policy was in 2018.
Dr. Sheffield, just make sure that Mrs. Rico gets to do that memo to us, because she's, she's aching to get us a bunch before she leaves, so would you make sure she gets that?
It will be one of her projects before she.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any more discussion on Dr. Robinson's discussion item? All right, Ms. Brill.
So obviously, I'm not a medical doctor, and clearly, Dr. Robinson, this is Dr. Robinson's area of expertise, but the public has been hearing the advice this year now more than ever, that it is important for us to receive flu shots. Public health officials have been saying that they fear the confluence of COVID-19 and influenza cases, and that it could result in what they're calling a twin-demic, and are urging vaccination for everyone, nearly everyone. Growing concern over the combined impact of the two viruses has even led to some, led some to mandate the vaccine, and in fact, the state of Massachusetts is requiring all schoolchildren to get flu vaccines in order to attend public schools and daycares. So at the very least, I would like us to encourage all employees and students to receive a flu shot. We could do that through communications, through the department and the website, but I want to hear Dr. Robinson's thoughts on this, and I, obviously, because the sunshine couldn't talk to her about it. And I would also welcome the input of others on this board to see whether we should be providing, you know, an opportunity at our schools. You know, I don't know where to go with this, but I'm just hearing more and more about this potential twin-demic and also not knowing which symptoms are from which, so I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson, would you like to chime in on this one?
No, I'm glad Mrs. Brill brought it up. It's a very important issue. Yeah, we're going to have the twin-demic, but let me just say this, for the people, my patients used to always say, no, when I get the flu shot, I get the flu. And my response to that is, oh, apparently, you never really had influenza, because if you had influenza, you would jump up and run to get your shot as soon as it was available. So, I mean, I could testify, because I had it. And one of the things that frightens me about COVID-19 is that it's worse than that, right? And so that was bad enough. I think that we should encourage, I don't know how Massachusetts is going to pull it off to mandate, I guess the word mandate in that, and when it comes to vaccination starts making me a little bit nervous, but, and I also have not read the components of the late, this year's vaccine, so I feel ill-prepared to answer anymore, but I think it is really something that we should look at and definitely encourage.
All right. I agree with Dr. Robinson, we should encourage it, but just in case the public starts the rumor that the board is ready to mandate flu vaccinations for everybody, we didn't say that tonight, it's not something we're even considering, we're just talking about encouraging. Ms. Brill, go ahead.
Thank you. And if I could suggest maybe bringing this back to the superintendent's health advisory on which Dr. Robinson serves to see what kind of guidance they can give us on that. I was excited. I ran and got my flu shot, because the last few years I've been getting it, I wind up still getting a different strain in February, but then I just read something that said, oh, I shouldn't have gotten it so early. So I don't know what we recommend. You're damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't, but I would just ask the superintendent to bring that back to the Health Advisory Committee for his, for guidance.
Superintendent's got his thumbs up, so we'll get that done. If we're done with that board discussion item, Dr. Robinson, BG4.
Yes, thank you. This is my request that the board consider putting back on the agenda at a future date policy 1.010. And specifically, what I want to look at is this, the organizational chart issue. So as, as it states now, if the organizational chart changes for director-level position or above, the revised chart shall be provided to the board and available to the public as stated above. Now, I want to be really clear, I'm not talking about the individuals, I'm just talking about the structure, right? And so, and so what happens, though, is the organizational chart can be changed, and then it can have budgetary impacts that then have been put into motion, but then the budget comes later, right, as an amendment. I just think that it would be best for us to see and approve any organizational chart that changes at the director level or above. I don't see that it would be a problem, but it just, it troubles me of the potential of what could happen, because what could happen is, for example, we do the statement of organization, I think in November, and then let's say January, there's a change, and then there's amendments, but the organizational chart has not been officially changed and approved by us, but we got, we kind of agreed to it through the budget. I just want it to be upfront, right? Mrs. McQuinn will remember some years ago where we added these area director positions? Well, that was a new job description and added into the budget, which, and that changed the organizational chart, but it is also. But it is also possible, for example, that maybe we would add additional area superintendents. And while I have no reason to think that there would be any conflict, it just needs to be upfront. And so I would just ask us to consider looking at that policy again in the foreseeable future. And I think that got a legal memo too.
I just want to make sure that we don't head down a micromanaging route in this process. I am fine with seeing the organizational chart and having the ability to veto it with our vote, but I don't want to have this board have input beyond that. I think we have, we hire a superintendent for a reason, and I want him to have a chance to make those decisions about what organization fits best. I really, I think that it's very important that we try not to take on more than what is our responsibility as a board and as elected officials.
Hold on, Dr. Robinson, Ms. Brill, then Dr. Robinson.
Dr. Robinson can respond.
Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I don't think this is micromanagement. I think that this is transparency. And we function as a team, so I have no reason to think that there'll be any problem. But this is, this is what happens, is that, and I've seen it happen in the past, right? And different people in different seats on the bus, right? But where the organizational chart was changed, and after the November meeting, and then there were these budgetary things, and then, and it was called to my attention by a member of the public because our org chart on the website was still the one that had been approved the previous November, right? And so it's just a function of transparency. I mean, if we're gonna operate as a team, we need to operate as a team.
Go ahead, Ms. Brill, then Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. So my initial gut reaction was similar to Ms. Whitfield in terms of I hold the superintendent accountable to put together the structure that works best for him. But on the flip side, I will tell you that when Dr. Robinson started talking about this, I recall sometime within the last few years when, for example, the ESE Department's reporting relationship, the relationship with the Executive Director of ESE was shifted under another category. And when I found out, I did address it with, you know, with, I believe it was Mr. Oswald at the time, and it was shifted back. So, you know, what I see is really, let's look at the policy, but a melding of it. I want the superintendent to be the one that puts, that proposes the structure that he believes will support him in his efforts to lead the district with us, but at the same time, have the opportunity, you know, to see it. You know, because that other change with ESE was put through without us even knowing about it. So I kind of see both sides, so I don't see any harm in looking at the policy. But again, I just want to make sure that we are not micromanaging and not usurping the superintendent's, you know, ability to lead us as he's hired to do.
Mrs. Andrews and Ms. McQuinn.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. I do agree with you. I think it's also about educating us as we work through our policies, as we look at the org chart. I mean, there are several things that the board has to do, and that's those job descriptions. And all of this ties in together. So we have to make sure that we recognize the job descriptions where they fit on the org chart. And it's truly about educating all of us before something happens. It's too late after it's actually happened, and we're coming back to say, "Oh, my goodness, we didn't know that." So I like this idea, and I think it's very worthwhile.
Mrs. McQuinn.
I don't, we all know that we're not dealing with individual positions. We know statute is very clear about that. Superintendent gets to make those decisions. So in terms of the organization chart, I totally agree. I would like to be informed about that. And I had a very specific reason in my head, and it will come back. But let me just, let me just say, the first thing I wanted to get to is, we do approve, when we approve the budget, the organizational chart for that year is presented with the budget. I certainly would like to be informed ahead of time. It's something Mrs. Brill said, I know what it was. When I first came on the board, Mrs. Andrews had said many times, when a new position comes, not just when a new position comes, but obviously, it had a job description that we do approve, that the current org chart be submitted with that. Or even, I've always been about, if you're asking for a new position, attach budget with it. But anytime there is a director-level change, submit the org chart. Then there's not anybody, it's not perhaps that Dr. Fanoi didn't want us to see it, it is that it's an oversight. And I thought, when I came on the board, that it was very clear that anytime we had those personnel changes, and I'm just making up director-level and above, that as long as we have the job descriptions approved, that it's just a matter of us being able to look at it and say, "Oh, that's right, that's where this belongs." So correct me if I'm wrong with that, because I don't, I think the superintendent, I'm just looking again at being a building principal. I certainly want to organize how the school, department heads, what I want to organize how that is to meet the needs of the school. And, but I'm gonna be transparent about that. It's not going to be a secret. So I realize I've stammered with that a little bit, but my whole point was, yes, let us know, but I don't want to get into seven of us trying to decide that we're going to approve an organizational chart.
Dr. Robinson?
So, okay, so I think Mrs. McQuinn was on to something, but then I lost it. So the thing is this, our job descriptions do not say, correct me if I'm wrong, our job descriptions do not say who you report to, right? So the, you know, the seats on the deck can be moved around, right? And the problem is, is that we have to approve the budget, right? And we approve budget amendments, right? And so why not us work on this and agree to this on the front end before these amendments come to us, right? Now, and then the other thing is that we, so we have plenty of job descriptions. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, we have plenty of job descriptions that are approved but not used. Or we could talk about the number of those positions that exist. It's just really for transparency and for us to know that then our level of commitment to this change continues when we see those budget amendments.
Mrs. Brill.
Thank you. So I'm getting confused, but I think the bottom line is just what I'd like to see is that we see that, you know, and there's a change to the organization chart that we just, you know, be informed, that we be given a copy of it. And, you know, and, because I really do not want to be micromanaging the organization, but just so that we have an understanding. And if maybe we see something that, you know, for some reason we don't think is appropriate, we could discuss it with the superintendent. But I just don't want to be the one creating that. I'd rather, you know, we just make sure that we see it. And, you know, and I also don't think that it's something that should be, because when I was reading the comments from General Counsel, it sounded to me like we were gonna put it out there for public comment. And I'm not looking for that. That's not something that I'm looking for. I don't think that's something that's appropriate. So I don't know if I'm confusing all of you more, because I'm confusing myself. But basically, all I would like to see is just when there's changes that we get to see them and that we have them.
Mrs. Rico.
Just one point of information, and I know the memo was lengthy and perhaps tedious to read through, but there is a point in time where, per the APA, each agency approves the statement of organization. And it does not specify how many times, when, what circumstances are. So that is, that is a place where this board, as other boards, approve their agency organization. So I just wanted to point that out as, that is a situation. And because of, as I recall a conversation, the numerous times that the organization actually changes, that it was determined that the right place for that would be annually during the budget process, as I think is where we landed. So the board does actually do that and complies with the APA for that situation and does have a vote on that, which would be on an agenda and would be subject to public comment and so forth and so on. But that's at that one point during the year.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have an opinion on this?
No, because this is the first I'm hearing. And for those who didn't hear me, I know there are certain provisions in my contract, so I'm just curious. Again, I don't really understand exactly what you're talking about, but any substantial changes, will we have to go back to the drawing board with my contract?
Okay.
Mrs. Rico, are you... Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to violate anything in the contract. I can't imagine that's in there. But, I mean, if it is, then so be it, bring it to my attention. But, so the policy already says, because we changed that a little while ago, a few years ago, that the revised chart shall be provided to the board and available to the public, right? It already says that. But what I'm saying is that then there are, there's changes that happen that we are responsible for. So imagine this, so imagine, and I'm gonna leave Dr. Fanoi out of it. Let's imagine we have Superintendent XYZ, and in January, they said, "I'm gonna restructure and come up with this new organizational chart." No new job descriptions, all the existing job descriptions, right? Come up with this new org chart, possibly place new people in positions, right? And then, then what are we supposed to do? Just approve the budget changes? Because then, so suppose we say, "No, we don't agree." That now you've added, we think you have three too many area superintendents, or whatever, whatever it is, and we think that that's, you know, or we're too top-heavy, like we get accused of being. Then what do we do? We just vote against the budget amendments? And then what happens? Then the superintendent has to go back and extract people from the positions he put them in? I mean, I'm just saying, just have it upfront, right? And we, listen, if we cannot, if we cannot nod our heads in agreement on a board discussion item, if we had to vote on a board discussion item, it seems to me that we need to vote on the organizational chart, right? I don't know, it's clear as day to me.
You know, my own opinion is, it's never been an issue for us. And I, you know, I don't want to make it an issue now. It's, you know, we all have a good relationship with our superintendent. If he's gonna make changes, he'll tell us what changes he wants to make. And it's like any other, you know, any other thing that he does that doesn't require board approval. He tells us that he's gonna do X or Y, and, you know, and we give him our opinion. And if he feels that, you know, that he doesn't have the support of the board, whether we're gonna vote it or not, he'll change his position on that. I'm sure that he doesn't want to do anything that's gonna cause the board not to be supportive of his plan. So with all due respect, Dr. Robinson, I think we should just leave it alone. I think it's working fine the way it is. And I don't, I don't, this board will probably not do it because we have a great relationship with our superintendent, but some future board could actually use a policy like that to micromanage and say, "No, I don't want this, I don't want this position here, I want it there, and I want you to move that here instead of there." And before you know it, the board is running the district by telling the superintendent where the position should be. And I don't want us to give some future board the opportunity to do that. Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
So actually, that already happened, I think we recall that. But this is not about individuals. This is certainly not about Dr. Fanoi. Policy is not about individuals. Policy is about the organization, right? And about how we serve our constituencies, right? And so my concern is actually that we may not be in such a good situation in the future, right? And I think that this is, in my mind, a long time coming. Some years ago, when the policy was changed to say be provided a copy, that was a change that I pushed for. That was the first step towards doing what I thought was right and appropriate. So if my fellow board members do not agree, then you're obviously entitled, right? But I am pretty clear that I think if we work as a team, that we should approve the organizational chart when there's substantive changes made to it.
Ms. Brill, then Mrs. McQuinn.
So I don't have any interest in approving the organizational chart. I agree with Mr. Barbieri, if it's not broken, let's not fix it. I just want, and I think the superintendent heard us loud and clear with the recent change that was proposed that wasn't put into a place that the board just wants to know. But I entrust our superintendent, and I would say going forward, I don't want, I mean, Dr. Fanoi, don't get me wrong, don't leave. But if we ever have somebody else there, sitting in your seat, I don't want to be telling him how to do his job. So, you know, I think we just leave it alone the way it is right now. I know we don't vote on discussion items, but I just would not support us going to vote on an organization chart that is to be provided by the superintendent as part of his responsibilities.
Ms. McQuinn.
I, if it's, if it isn't broken, let's not try to fix it. I, there was something that happened in a North County school a few years ago that a lot of parents were upset about. And I do remember the former superintendent saying to the principal, "What problem were you trying to solve?" And that has stayed with me, "What problem were you trying to solve?" I think we're good. If, some of us are referring back to a previous situation, and that was when, I don't want to be asked as an emergent, not an emergency item, but we need to get this done so business can go on, a job description. I want time to look at a job description because that's important. But, and that's what we do, we approve job descriptions. So I'm very comfortable with things the way they are. I think we have, I think we have lots of opportunity already to do a little bit of micromanaging. I don't need any more.
Mr. Superintendent, I think with, you know, the discomfort, I think, with the board, some of this, some of this is, you know, I think if you were gonna make a major change, you know, you would bring that to us in a workshop and explain, you know, you're gonna be making major changes, you know, and you want to explain to us why. And we don't vote on it, but you bring it to us in a workshop so that we can all understand the rationale behind what you're doing. Just to explain to us any other major change that you would want to make in your administration.
Yeah, I'd be perfectly fine with that. That's perfectly fine with me. Yeah, I would go out and do that.
All right, are we done with this one?
My parting comment is that I hope Dr. Fanoi remains the superintendent for as long as each and every one of you is on the board, so that you never get to the point that you go, "That's what she was talking about," okay?
Thanks, Doc. Is there anything else any board members have? Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you, through Dr. Fanoi to Mr. Oswald. We have a wonderful principal that's going to Pioneer Park, Haitian-American. I would like for someone to make a statement about Dr. Oliver. She's done a great job over there at Pioneer Park as an AP, and the school is B-rated. So somebody, Dr. Fanoi, Mr. Oswald, can you make some statements about our new principal?
Absolutely. Mr. Oswald, if you're available, or if Ms. Angela Avery-Moore is available, either one of them could speak specifically to our wonderful new hire. And also, let's give a shout-out to Ms. Pam Buckman, who did a great job with that assistant principal at their school and is now moving on to a great opportunity in the Jupiter area. So again, her heart is broken, but I think she's excited about her new work. new work.
Thank you, yeah, we are very excited for Dr. Oliver to be taking on the helm of Pioneer Park Elementary School, she has a vast experience as many different roles here in Palm Beach County, supporting schools in the past, and for the last, I think, six years, she's been the assistant principal at Pioneer Park, and we know that school has made tremendous gains, some of the highest learning gains, going up to a B-rated school, so we know she's gonna do a fantastic job, and if you get to know Dr. Oliver and her story, as Ms. Andrews mentioned, she did immigrate here as a young child from Haiti, and has done well throughout her career in high school in Miami, and then making her way, fortunately for us, up here in Palm Beach County, so thank you, Ms. Andrews, and we look forward for her taking over.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews, for bringing that up, thank you, Mr. Oswald, anything else?
Yeah.
Robinson?
Yeah. So the point Ms. Andrews made, so can we, even while we're in virtual land, have the principals, new principals come and greet us as they did when we were face-to-face? Give her an opportunity to make.
I think we have to decide what our meetings will look like in the next couple of weeks, but absolutely, I think we need to try to get back to some of our, and we haven't celebrated our kids all summer long, like, we've got to figure out a way to get back into those rhythms between our tough meetings, to have some moments to celebrate and laugh and smile, so I absolutely agree with you, Dr. Robinson, we'll figure that out.
All right, board members, if there's nothing else, nothing else, Mr. Superintendent, we'll take a motion to adjourn, motion by Mrs. Whitfield, seconded by Mrs. Andrews, any discussion, I hope not, all in favor, opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned, see you all next week. Oh, no, no meeting next week, we'll see you the weekend.